I noticed this started last year, once they figured out there was no accountability for their actions.
I'm not gonna argue with you about it or to talk about it.
Next time somebody accuses me or my child of something, they better know what they're talking about. Time saying, well, look at that shovel up there.
If I was traumatized by almost being murdered by my husband, I did not turn to drugs and I did not blame everybody else for my problems.
These two hundred and eighty police calls include four overdoses, one with one resulting in a death in the bathroom and the mention of fentanyl into a death.
That right there is devotion, showing up to a meeting with a broken leg.
You seem to have any solutions, but you had a lot of excuses.
Time saying, well, look at that shovel up there.
Alright, everybody. Today's four twenty-two. We are at six thirty-six, we're at the City of Clarkston City Council Meeting. We're just about to walk in. Got here a little early, figured we'd get some B-roll. Don't wanna get too much though, considering the fact that people are really starting, well, yeah, starting to drop now. Yeah, I thought there'd be more, but... We'll see. You just never know. Those empty spaces. But maybe it's just the late turnout and we'll get a pretty decent spot. I wonder what Dave drove, I wonder if he's already here? Bet he'll be here though, for sure. Let's walk inside and see what we got. We're gonna try and be quiet this time. Alright, let's see what we got on the table here. I probably got that last night, but it's pretty cool. Table fishing dams. Here's the agenda, if I was motivated, I would probably take one. No, I don't wanna scan that, 'cause I don't wanna pull the agenda. See what we got. Very small turnout. We are definitely early, though. Let's go see what's up here, since we're early. Hey, now we can put a name to a face. See that? There's Russ. There's Pat. Steven. Dave. Kate. Robin. And Monica. Oh, we didn't get this in. Think that's anonymous. Maybe they're not here tonight, maybe that's why. Sure, you don't know how it goes. Seems stone cold. Alright, y'all, here we go. Starting to get pretty busy up in here. A lot of people showing up now, I like it. It's like six fifty-two. Six fifty-two. People walking in. Alright, I think we're just gonna keep it going now, it's getting pretty close, so. I have to edit a few minutes of boring time, but it's not too bad.
For some reason, yeah, it's attracted to me. I don't try. Should've checked out the Foster Park with me, though, that'd been a good one. You know, and I just try to walk around and I, it's just crazy. I shouldn't go by myself, 'cause then I feel like they can talk to me like that. I shouldn't go by myself. I shouldn't go by myself, my mom keeps telling me that, but... That one, I wasn't paying attention at all, like, I was just worried about getting shot, and I didn't realize how close he was. That's when my adrenaline kicked in, that's why I got mad, I shouldn't have got mad, but what do I do?
That right there is devotion, showing up to a meeting with a broken leg. Devotion. Are you recording yet? Alright, let me stick your finger real quick. Just kinda see the turnout. Not bad, way better than it was ten minutes ago.
Seven o'clock, and I call the regular meeting of Clarkston City Council to order these rights of the flag.
Leads to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone, and a special welcome to our high school students. Who sit way in the back. Because of the agenda changes, council, um, we do have an executive session, um, it's going to be right after the approval of the minutes and then, um, I'm sorry, we'll have a hearing right after the approval of the minutes, um, it regards the city business license suspension. And then we'll have an executive session, um, at the end of the council meeting. And that'll be regarding an update on the litigation. If you wanna add those to your agenda. Any changes or additions to the minutes. If not, you stand approved as distributed. And we're ready to start the hearing, the city business license suspension hearing. The time is seven oh one. And I call the hearing to order an open for city business license suspension of Reeve Exteriors LLC, DVA, Devella. And let me tell you how we'll proceed, council. First, we'll have the testimony from the city administrator, Steve Austin. This will be followed by testimony from Brian Blair, general manager with Devella. Following their testimony, council will be able to ask questions of either party. This is not a public hearing, there will be no public comment. So I first want to introduce Steve Austin to the live testimony for the city.
Good evening, council, uh, this is a complaint that has come before the city actually multiple years ago. However, uh, during that, during the timeframe that we've had complaints, we went through three different building inspectors, so I wanted to focus on most current building inspector and the reports that he submitted, um, that were reviewed by the mayor and the city attorney. The current building inspector is, is present, that's Richard Gittens, if you have any questions, you will, you can also direct those to him for any clarification. The first time that he had contact with Devella was actually when he was just, uh, on his daily, traveling through the city and he came across a house that he saw, uh, being roofed. And so when he got out to look at it, because he did not remember a building permit being submitted for that address, he found that the house was being re-roofed without a building permit. He put a stop work order on it and, um, reached out through them to find out who authorized that work. And what he found out was that contractor, although they had a state contractor's license, was operating in the city limits without a city, uh, business license endorsement. And so, um, he did note that the, this subcontractor that was doing it, they advised, they were only subcontracting, they were not the general contractor on the job. The general contractor was Devella. The subcontractor themselves had reached out to the building department earlier in the year and, um, had found out what was required to do business inside the city. And in response to that, the building inspector had even, uh, not only advised them, but sent them a business license packet via email. There were many phone calls as well as emails back and forth between the building inspector and the contractor. And even after all of that, um, and issuing, giving the building permit issued, he never received any calls or emails, uh, asking for inspections of the property. After he had reopened it, um, because of that, the, because he closed out the inspection, once he found out it'd been completed, so he closed that out and advised that they closed due to no inspections of the property. The contractor reached out and said, uh, or the subcontractor reached out and said, "We can't get paid by the contractor till we have this resolved." So he reopened the contract, they got the business license, and then he started, um, to, uh, do the inspections and made them re-part so that he can look and proceed forward. And then the next encounter that he had was when the account manager with Devella reached out, uh, asking about a permit and an inspection on another, uh, residence. And at the time that was reached out, it was supposed to start the following Monday, is when she said it would be completed, however, that would mean working overtime and not having any inspections done when a permit hadn't even been issued. And arranging that with the building inspector, uh, he told them when he was gonna be back in the office and he would go check on that. Uh, he went over to the address to check to see the progress that was made. And when he arrived there, he found that the roof had been completely finished. When he called Devella and asked why the, 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 why they were, uh, getting a business or getting a building permit on a house that had a brand new roof, um, he was informed by them that unfortunately, they had already installed the roof and that now they needed a permit and the inspections to be completed. Devella was informed that permits are required before any work starts. And they apologized, said this was a one-time issue and it did somehow fall in through the cracks. And so that they, they sent the contractor back, um, so that they could expose some spots on the roof and allow the inspector to check those areas. When that did occur, he found that there were, um, areas that were not properly stapled and secured to the, to the roof. And, um, every, you know, outside of that, everything else seemed to be up to code, but they could not, um, they could not pass the inspection with those areas not being fixed. Then at that time, he went to the other side and on the north side of the roof, he noticed a sag in the roof where they placed some metal sheeting. And, um, upon further, um, talking with the homeowner who was on scene, they, the homeowner advised the building inspector that that wasn't going to be part of the complete repair, is that they were going to fix the sag that was in the roof. And when the building inspector looked at it, he noticed that the way that they had fixed it was not up to code and was not structurally sound. And so he reached out to Devella to advise of this. Um, Devella's answer was, "They are not, uh, in the business of fixing structural repairs and that would be on the homeowner's." And when asked why they would install a brand-new roof over a, over an area that was not structurally sound, um, they did not have an answer, they just said they were doing what they were hired to do. They did, Devella did hire a local engineering firm to come and look at what needed to be done to get that up to code, because the building inspector refused to sign off on it. And it was right around this time, they also received another, uh, application for a permit at another residence and, um, a third permit that was supposed to start in a few weeks. When they reviewed those permit applications, they found that the, um, the Devella had been listed as both, or as the only contractor on the job on both of those, and they were licensed with the city and they did have a state endorsement. However, um, when Devella called and said that they were starting the job and, and requested the first inspection, the sheathing of, of the roof, um, they arrived and found out that it had already been dried in and that no sheathing was exposed for him to check. He, uh, the building inspector informed Devella and they came back to expose that, um, and they verified that the sheathing was fine. And so then they were able to proceed. However, the contractor that showed up was not Devella, it was actually a subcontractor on the job. And upon looking at that, um, as it said on the permit, it said Devella would be doing the job. They did not list any subcontractors, when they looked at the subcontractor's information, they found that, um, that subcontractor did not have a City of Clarkston business license endorsement. Upon contacting Devella, uh, the building inspector again clarified to them that they have to be, any subcontractors working on their jobs have to be licensed both by the city and the state. And, um, them just putting down themselves as a contractor was not, um, adequate. They did not seem to be happy with that and didn't know why they couldn't just contract the job and have whoever they were, wanted to work on it, work on it. A stop work order was issued, um, because that kind, that business was not licensed and wasn't in the city. Subcontractor then applied for their city endorsement and that always is a process, it takes up to a week to complete. And so the building inspector informed them that once that was completed, then they would remove the stop work order. The following Monday, they found out that the endorsement had been approved. The stop work order was lifted from that property and Devella emailed to say that the contract would be there to finish the work, the roofing job on the weekend. The building inspector does not work weekends, and so he let them know that he would not be able to inspect it until Monday and they were not to proceed without an inspection that needed to be done. At one thirty on Monday, is the agreed-upon time, they went to find, uh, or he went to do the inspection and found that the roof was ninety-nine percent completed. Upon reaching out to Devella, um, they advised that the contractor was, the subcontractor was supposed to wait, but apparently had not waited. At that time is when, um, the building inspector, this was in December, toward the end of December, or the end of November, first of December, reached out to the mayor to decide what needed to be done, and at that time administratively, the mayor decided that this needed to be reviewed by legal counsel. And so she notified the general manager of Devella that, uh, that there would be no work by them in the city until that could be reviewed by legal and arranged about a thirty-day period. So January fifteenth was when, um, that was going to be reviewed. The, the general manager, in talking with the mayor, had advised that this was a one-time problem, they didn't normally have issues like this. And was upset that, uh, the mayor had made this decision and now pushed contacting them. And so after that, we waited until January and, um, during the, during that interim, Devella actually had reached out to the building, uh, inspector to try and get another couple of projects going on or at least in the works so when they, when they could start. But it was, they were told to hold off until January, when, um, the mayor had been, was able to have it, the review finalized. It should be noted, during this time, there had been multiple complaints ongoing from, um, different residents in the city of Clarkston, some of them actually met with the city attorney and talked with them. Of all the issues that were happening, stories of people having, um, their homes re-roofed after they'd been roofed two years prior. People making high-pressure sales and going door-to-door. Going, and, and so, uh, as we're in the, in the waiting on that and after January fifteenth, it was arranged for the, uh, building inspector to meet with the, the local engineer and the contractor at the original house with the, the sag in the roof. And it was told at that time that, um, that originally that they were not going to fix that, but then they said they would have a, a crew come back and fix that. On, in February, they came back and looked at that and they, um, and the, the final determination on that was they were not going to fix that portion of the roof that was previously agreed on. Because they felt that it was up to a standard that they, they were fine with. And then at the end of February, uh, the general manager of Devella contacted the building inspector and said, once again, they were going to fix that, um, and he wanted to confirm that. But as of this time, their, the sag in the roof remains unfixed. And, um, after reviewing with the city attorney and also talking with the mayor, um, the licensing official for business licenses is the city clerk, um, working with the attorney, the, a letter was sent out, you have that letter in front of you, on March twenty-fifth. That letter was to inform Devella that their license would be suspended for one year due to violating the city code. And that's the city code five dot zero two dot zero six zero, paragraph one. And allowing them to appeal that decision if they so choose. Since that time, the only, uh, remedy that we had found from Devella is they said that they now have a process in place to track and make sure that their subcontractors are licensed within the city limits. Uh, but there have been no other remedy, um, on any of the others. And obviously, uh, we haven't been issuing any permits, so that part, um, you know, they haven't been able to do business. I did want to let you know that Devella actually had two business licenses with the city. Uh, this first one is their corporate business license, their contractor's license. It also usually will come and get a solicitor's license for everybody that goes door-to-door. Those expire at the end of the year. If Devella is not allowed to have this license, they also will not be able to get a solicitor's license, 'cause that's contingent upon this contractor's license. So that is, uh, the end of what I have to say at this time.
Hey, at this time, um, Brian Blair here.
How's everybody doing? Good? Since it was brought us, uh, brought up most recently to address the, uh, the house that's under, uh, with the sag in it. Ultimately, in the long run, we were not contracted to address anything structural on the house. With this, what happened was, the installers were out there and the homeowner came out, the installer said, "Hey, you have a sag in the roof, what do you want, do you want us to address it or no?" He said, "Just put a stick in it." So they literally just put a two-by-four there. So it's gonna hold it up. That, that was where they really made the first mistake. If we had known that there was anything structural with it, we wouldn't have touched it. But at that point, when it's already torn off, we obviously wanted to protect the home. Especially in the timeframe that we're talking about, in the middle of winter, we wanna make sure it's protected. So when it comes to, uh, a lot of times coming out and doing inspections, we always wanna make sure the house is dry in and protected. It's better for me to tear some of the material off to make sure the home is protected for the homeowner. Uh, first, instead of waiting, uh, for the inspector to get there, I'd rather take it off, eat the cost myself, make sure it's done right, and then go ahead and put it back. So, long story short, on that one, we were not contracted to touch that sag in the roof. The reason it is not addressed is because we settled with the lawyer of the homeowner. We gave them money for them to be able to address it with, uh, exactly the engineering firm that we hired on our own dime to go out and do an assessment. So we, we ate a lot of cost on that job to make sure everything was right. So we came back down, made sure it passed, uh, passed inspection. Is that what you wanted to? Let's see, how was that done? So, long story short, we have a saying, uh, that we use all the time, but it's, "People are unmanageable, systems and processes are manageable." What I can tell you is, we love doing business in the city of Clarkson, we want to continue to have a great relationship here. So what we've done, one of the guys with me, Eric, forget in the back, um, prior to this happening, he was actually promoted to quality assurance for the whole company, he's building that program out, because we recognize some of the same shortcomings. So we're trying to develop systems and processes to address that. Now specifically in one month, Eric is gonna be hiring and training the person for Spokane office. And his job is to go out to all the cities and counties and even all these places where they don't even take online payments. But to make sure to build a, a relationship with all the inspectors, so they know exactly who each other are. We can, we can talk to them firsthand, they go out, they do checks on jobs, they do all these things that I know that you guys are hoping for. And so we have put those systems and processes in place to include the tracker that, um, Mr. Austin had discussed. So, um, the, the biggest thing that I can do, we can't go backwards and change anything, but I can change what we're doing moving forward. It's, it's an investment, but obviously one that's gonna pay off, because I wanna make sure we're not just doing well for the city of Clarkson, but anywhere we go.
So you may ask, uh, questions, and if you have questions for the, um, building inspector, you can ask questions of Richard Gittens also. So if you have questions, now's the time to ask.
How long has Devella been in business?
Um, Devella as a whole has been in business, so I wanna say eleven years. So we operate under Reeve Exteriors, which is one of the LLCs under Devella. Spokane has been here for seven, eight years?
You'd think you would've known, uh, the different steps to take along the way, uh, being in business for eleven years.
Yeah, and, and that's something that I can understand why. It's not an excuse, but every sin, every county and city has different processes, not just for the inspections, but who to reach out to, what is the process. Like in the Silver Valley, for instance, they don't even have an online payment. So we have to request a check, drive it out, move with the inspector. So there, there are different processes all over the place, in eastern Washington, northern Idaho. So I understand why, that's something we need to remedy, right? And that, that's what the, the purpose of the quality assurance position is to do, is make sure we have a close working, uh, relationship with the inspectors. Make sure we know all those processes. Some places have two inspections, some have none, some only request pictures, which is why sometimes they'll finish it to protect the house, have the pictures available, a lot of times that will suffice on the inspection. So that's, that's why some of those things are done sometimes. Um, but yes, sir, the, the goal is to fix it long-term, so this doesn't happen again. So that's, that's why the new position is, it's important to me.
Well, that's, that brings up a question I have, it kind of ties in, says, "My hand," and then when the vote was done, was the estimator trained to notice things like sags?
So these are, these are things we're constantly training, constantly training. Uh, the sag that was on the roof was over the soffit, it was outside of the eve. And sometimes you could see telegraphing, uh, which all that means is you can see issues kind of through the shingle. And sometimes you could see telegraphing, which all that means is you can see issues kind of through the shingles. And sometimes you can't see it until it's off. And so on this, this case specifically, I don't know. But I know when you're estimating, a lot of times it is difficult to tell what's happening underneath the shingles. You can't see that telegraphing sometimes, but there are times we'll go to houses where it has three, four, five layers of roofing, needs a full re-sheet, there's no way to know what you're getting into at that point. So they, they can just be difficult sometimes.
Probably my biggest issue right now is, is the fact that Richard did, did the, did the inspection, but stopped, stopped, whatever you call it. And, but the work was still continuing to get done over the weekend, while you're undermining the city's deal there. That's, that's probably one of the biggest issues that I have right now. I just had my, my roof redone. I got a lot of, I had a few people give me recommendations, but I went with a local guy. If I, if I knew his name, I knew the name of the business, I'd throw him out there and advertise more, but, uh, but yeah, it's, it's kind of a little bit of a blind eye, so.
Like I said, my, my goal is to change how it is moving forward. With spending the money to do it, spent the money to make this one right, like I'm, I'm, I have a couple of other examples here in Clarkston specifically, I cannot remember the lady's name. But as a GM, I'm from Spokane, Eric actually grew up here in Clarkston. My goal is always to do what's right by the customer. And then to do what's right by the customer, we have to make sure we're following all the city ordinances. And that's, my goal is to make sure we're following those things. And all the, really honestly, I could, I could promise all day that we're going to do our best to try, but it's really about putting systems and processes in place to make sure we can be as clean as possible. Because I can't promise to be perfect, but if I know we have a system and process in place that we're following and we're in close communication, I think that's as close as we can get to be imperfect, so.
Is there a way for the city to check up on these processes that you're talking about?
Yes, sir.
Moving forward?
Yes, sir. So we have an operation manager for roofing specifically. And anytime, anyone from the city can call in and check in. And we'll have a quality assurance manager too. And so that position is supposed to work closely with city inspectors. So anytime, sorry, I don't see the name, of the local inspector.
Mr. Giddens?
Yes.
Right behind you.
Oh, cool. So at, at any time, I thought it was somebody with a name placard I was looking for. At any time, the city inspector can reach out right through our QA, who works directly with our operations managers for windows, roof, gutters.
Maybe you should keep this inspector informed because that just adds to his job, checking on you all the time, you know? So I think it would be good for you.
For sure, yes, sir.
I just, oh, I'm sorry. No, please finish.
When, when we talked to the mayor back in, I think it was November, when we talked to the mayor, it kind of took me back a little bit, I didn't think that, you know, this kind of an outcome was possible. Which the goal is, if it's this serious, that I need to change something. So I'm glad that it came up so we could change our process, this doesn't happen anywhere else as well, and we can fix this. But at the same time, we have made sure to not do any marketing at all in Clarkston. That online marketing, we, any, any of those leads that we pay for, we have just not called. So we've eaten that expense, we've not done any other marketing, canvassing, which required the extra permits. We'll make sure we continue to pull those and that we, we follow all city ordinances with that. But that's five months of not doing business in town, it's, I hope that we can get back to doing that as soon as possible.
So I guess my question, Mr. Blair, and thanks for being here. I think, you know, your idea of the quality insurance, quality assurance position is really smart. I guess my question is, you got the regulations from the building inspector a while ago. I'm assuming it was before five months ago, is that correct? It sounds like it was a couple of building inspectors ago.
Probably, most likely.
Right, right. So you have the information as to the policies that the city set forth for general contractors and what those policies ask you to do. And then that's your roadmap. So even without a quality insurance person, you have the regulations provided. And I think that's the problem, like until we bring you here and the mayor has that discussion with you, it's kind of how can we, it's kind of like a trust factor.
Sure.
Like making sure that these homes are completed properly and the inspections are done before the work's completed, et cetera. I think you, you know this better than me. And so I think that's the concern I have.
And I hear you, and really honestly?
And understand that, but it's just, it's kind of a pattern. It sounds like a pattern because there are multiple examples that were brought forward tonight.
Yeah. The, the one thing I would say, moving forward, obviously we need to make sure that we are abiding by everything. In the process, if something wasn't followed, just like the, the conversation you were having about this house, ultimately, I ate a lot of costs to do the right thing by the homeowner. And I'm always going to do that. Moving, moving forward, I'll always do that. And, and that's my goal, but in conjunction with making sure we do it right, it's going to happen.
I think it was a good catch, Richard, because we would have never known about that unless you were patrolling around the neighborhoods. That's a kind of a big deal too.
All right, so I, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Was your creation of the quality assurance, was that solely based on receiving this letter?
No, sir.
Okay, because we, we've had, and not just the cases listed, I think the last year or the year before, I mean, we, we included a flyer and a utility bill warning against doing business, not specifically with your business, but with the type of kind of, what's it like, a fly-by-night, come into town, do sales, check permits? Because we had, a, a lot of citizens have roofing materials just left on their yard and no contractor ever showed up.
Sure.
And so we've, we've had these issues and it's not, it's not recently. It's, it's been, it's been a little while. So I don't, and then we have the, the problems listed. You know, we, we do have to protect our citizens.
Absolutely.
And it's, it's just kind of concerning that it's, it's kind of been a repeated issue with, I mean, that's why we're here today, is because it's been, it's been an issue.
Yeah.
And, and so I don't, so I'm, I'm reluctant to deny a business, a business license. But what do we, what assurances do we have? Like if it happens again, if it happens, you know, how many, how many issues do we have before we need to take a corrective issue or, you know, make a corrective?
Sure.
Move? I, I, I don't know, I mean, you, you can, you can give us a guarantee and we, we can take you at your word, but that's, that's kind of the, the standstill we're at right now is, it, it, it can't happen. It can't continue to happen.
Sure. And, and I will say this, when it comes to, as, as the general manager of the Bella, gosh, just, I think five years? Right about five years? When I took over as GM about a year and a half ago, my goal was to make sure that the customers are always taken care of. Even if it means I have to eat the extra cost, even if it means, there, in the last year and a half I was GM, you'd be hard-pressed to find anyone that had a bad experience with the Bella that was not addressed. Because in this construction, mistakes will happen. But the question is, does the contractor, are they big enough to be able to go back and fix it? And that's why those other jobs have happened, is because small contractors, what they do is they get in this battle of, they, they buy the material on credit, they get that delivered to the house. But now there's a lien placed on the house. So now the contractor runs away with that person's money, not only to run, run away with that money, but now the homeowner has to pay for all that material too, so their house will be leased. One of the advantages with, with the Bella is the size that we have, we're 50, 52 locations. Spokane was the 15th, so we're one of the earlier ones. But ultimately, we have a $2 million policy, our subcontract, subcontractors have a $2 million policy, and we partner directly with manufacturers. So the largest roofing manufacturer in North America, GAF, we partner directly with them. So if anything ever happens to anyone's projects, they're triple back. We're actually backed by good housekeeping as well. And so when it comes to taking care of the customer, we're always going to do that. And the approach that we take as a business is what protects the customer. Now the thing I need to make sure is that this is dialed in, so we don't have anything.
How many homes?
I'm going to chime in here. When I had a conversation with you, I assume it was you that I talked to on the phone? You didn't seem to have any solutions, but you had a lot of excuses. And to me, that was why I suspended your, you know, coming to the city to do any jobs. So, you know, you gave the excuse about, well, there's so many different, you know, laws in so many different cities and all that sort of thing. That's not our problem, that's your problem. That's for you to, you know, learn who has what ordinances, what has, you know, what kind of things they require from a contractor. That's on you, that's not on the city. And so, you know, I'm loathe to think that very much is going to change. You say, you say that, but I, you know, within my conversation with you, I was not convinced.
Well, you know, in our, in our conversation, I know that I probably got emotional. The reason I got emotional is because I have a lot of employees who depend on us to do the job to support their families. So some of that probably came through. A lot of times, sounds like an excuse, but it also could just be what we face. And as a company that services North Idaho, North Idaho, Eastern Washington, the fact is there are a ton of different licensing, city, county, all these different things, different inspections on each, each different type of job, there are layers to it. And I guess that's what I was just trying to get across here. Because the, the hard thing is this, when, if somebody makes a mistake, what is the timeframe where you know they're not going to make a mistake? There is no timeframe, you have to give someone a second chance to be able to do it. That's what I'm hoping to get.
How many homes did you roof last year here in this, in Clarkston, do you know?
Ballpark.
I know it's a hard question.
Yes, ma'am, I, I did.
Like five, 10, 15? I mean, if you're, if you're supporting your staff, I guess, how many staff are you employing that are, that are getting their jobs directly from the city of Clarkston? That's kind of goes back to your earlier kind of comment.
Yeah, so we don't just do roofing, so we do roof, windows, siding, math, gutters.
Okay.
So we do multiple products.
Got it.
Which is why it's, come to a small town, in any small town, there are people who can't find contractors who do this stuff.
That would lead me to my question real quick.
Yeah.
And if, I know you haven't been selling for five months, but let's just say you, you sold a job today, how far out are you?
Uh, which product, sir?
With scheduling a roof, your roof?
One week. One week.
One week?
I'll have it on less than a week.
So then, then the timing issue, you, too much work backed up wasn't an issue or wasn't a, a part of the reason why it got jammed through?
It's not anymore, not anymore, no, sir.
Was it then?
But during the winter time, it makes it a little bit difficult. Obviously, we get to Eastern Washington, Northern Idaho, we have to wait for good days to be able to roof. And so the backlog gets a little tricky and it's hard to navigate. But right now, with it sunny, we've been able to get through.
Any other questions, counsel?
I just think that, you know, maybe with your suspension, it'd be assigned to other contractors to get the right permits.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I hope so. I mean, it's good learning from real mistakes, kind of learning from somebody else's.
Sure.
Right.
Any other questions, counsel? If not, do you have any questions for Richard?
Uh, no, ma'am. I've been like, I'm sorry.
No, I'm asking counsel.
Oh, I was like, no.
Is, is this to, would this revoke an established business license or not issue a new business license?
So currently, they have an existing business license with the city. I think it expires midsummer or something, I can give that for you.
So this, we, we can do this to revoke a business license?
Yes.
This is actually, and, and it's not just to prevent the issuing of a new one?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, that, the, the city code that's there is for revocation, suspension, or denial.
Any other questions, counsel? Make it your seat.
Can I say one more thing now?
Sure.
Okay. Ultimately, it has been five months where we haven't done any work. We've done our best to abide by everything that we've been given. Making sure Eric is, has this guy going next month to do the QA position. Making sure that we can do everything. I feel like five months has been a pretty substantial punishment as a contractor. And I hope that we get a chance to prove that we have made changes. Thank you guys for your time.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions of Richard, counsel?
I just need clarification, so he hasn't done any work, the Bella hasn't done any work for five months? Was that by, again, choice or was that from the, did that cease after the mayor's conversation? I just need that.
So the Bella did not do any work after the mayor had had the conversation with them. They had applied for a permit at the end of the, the January 14th area to do some windows, in which case we had, we told them that at the current status that they had, we were not able to get them that permit.
Correct. November?
Uh, December.
December, actually, December, okay. Thanks.
Yep.
Any questions of administrator? From his presentation? Okay. So any other comments or questions, counsel? If not, I call the hearing closed for the city business license suspension of Reed Exteriors LLC, DVA Dabella. The time is 7:39. And counsel, we couldn't take any action during the hearing. But now we can entertain a motion. And here are the three choices per city code. A, accept the license officer's recommendation as presented. Or B, determine no action warranted. Or C, modify the recommended action. So there are three options as per city code, the action that you can take.
And I will clarify, the, the letter that was from the licensing officer was a one-year suspension. So of those three options, the first option would be to uphold that one-year suspension. The second option would be to have no suspension. And the third option would be a modification of that suspension.
Can we have discussion on this?
Let's start the motion on the floor.
Yeah, we have to have a motion first. So I'll entertain a motion, so I'll now entertain a motion for action on the one-year business license suspension of the Bella.
I move that we take action on the one-year business license suspension for Bella.
There's seconds?
Second.
Okay, so moved and seconded that there's a motion that we take action on the one-year suspension of the business license for the Bella. Discussion.
I guess my first inclination is to consider two things. One, that the quality assurance program is not in place yet and they're working on it. And number two, that they've had five months of no business activity in the city of Clarkston. So my, my thought is that if there was a suspension, that it would potentially take into consideration the five months of no business. And also proving out the quality assurance program is in place and is, meets the satisfaction of the building, our building inspector. That's just a thought, but I don't know, I'd love to hear what you guys are, any other comments, counsel?
That, that's a lot of, that's a lot from the city government. The way, so I mean, our, our motion on the floor is to accept the recommendation of the...
The way, so I mean, our, our motion on the floor is to accept the recommendation of the, of, of, like A, right?
Yeah.
Is what we're, is what we're talking about? Is that the motion that was made?
That's the motion that was made.
Is that what I did? Did I make a motion?
That's, that's how I understand. We have to take that motion.
Sorry, that's my fault.
I mean, you can, um, you can make a motion to amend that, or you can vote it down and then make another.
Yeah.
I think, uh, Clarkston's been plagued with things like this, contractors like this for years. And I think it's time it stops. And I, and I don't, I think the year suspension is, uh, would be the right thing to do. That's my opinion.
I'm thinking that five months of that year has been kind of implemented already, hasn't it?
Do you mind if I say something?
I know it's time for discussion for the council, please.
That's, we don't, I, I don't, I've never, I haven't seen anything like this. I haven't heard of anything like this coming from the city. This, it, it seems like a, a big punitive reach to do to a business. I'm, I'm, I'm reluctant to do that. I would say they have, they've, they've said they've got a month to get their quality insur- assurance in place. We've had an issue with them, I think, five months. And, and a month for them to get their stuff in order is, is almost overly punitive, but I think reasonable. I, I just, I, I feel like this is just a, this is a little bit of a, a reach from government.
Well, if, if we, if we do that, he should report to Richard. And it shouldn't be up to Richard to check on him.
Yeah.
And he should come up, if we do this, he should come up with all the proper paperwork and let him do what they're doing and prove that they've improved.
Absolutely. And, and so, my, my question to Steve about this is, I mean, if we, we can end up right here again, it doesn't, it isn't a long process to, to be in this situation again if nothing is, is corrected. But I just, I, I have, I can't get behind a year's suspension of a business license with, on, on, on this one. So, I mean, you guys, I, I wanna let you guys talk and then I'll, I'll make a motion and see how everybody feels about it.
We need to deal with the motion that I made.
Yeah, well, mine's kind of along that. Um, one of the options was modification. Is it possible to, to remain that suspension until they're up for a new license? And at the time they have to renew their license, they prove that they have done the, the things to remedy the situation. The other question I have is, have we contacted any other cities to see if this is an ongoing problem?
Good point.
I, I would say something about contacting the cities in an ongoing problem and kind of to echo what, um, Mr. Meyer had said, um, every city has different rules. So, really, it's kind of what is happening here may or may not be happening. It may be happening because of different rules they have and may be not happening at all because of rules they have. So, it's, it's kind of hard to check with other cities. And so, I just wanted to put that out there because we might not get a lot of additional information if that wasn't part of the structure.
Mine is mainly based upon the blatant disregard for what the building inspector told them. And that, every city's gonna have that.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, when was the initial, the initial, uh, in notification from the mayor?
December. I don't have the date.
Yeah, but I, I, I would.
I had a conversation in December.
Yeah, I know that, um, I don't have that email right here in front of me. I can try to do a search on that. But I know, um, as of December 11th, um, they had already been informed by the mayor, that they were not to be doing any business until January.
Any other comments?
Okay, so, here is, okay, so here's my motion. I would like to make a motion to amend, to modify the recommended action that has been proposed. And have that suspension for the five months that is for a total of six months, for the five months that is already passed, and then, and then that suspension comes up on May 11th. Uh, as per when the mayor had contacted and that suspension was in effect. You said December 11th?
Yeah.
Okay, so that, that's six months.
It's five months.
So, six months, so you're at six. All right. So, on the 11th of June. Just to find of, of the middle of that, so that there is punitive action from the city, not overstepping. So, um, a six month, starting in December, on December 11th.
Okay, so your motion is to amend the motion to?
To six months with time served.
Six months.
And, and I think it's, uh, with the stipulation that, uh, uh, they keep the city, uh, involved, uh, let them, uh, where they can let us know the improvements they made.
Okay, we can only have one motion at a time?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean. Well, if you could keep the full, that might be there with it.
Second. Second motion that we have discussion.
All right, so it's the move that, and seconded, that the motion be amended to, um, extend the, the business suspension to, to, to June?
If you want to set the date specifically, you probably do it, or you could say six months from the notification.
Six months from the, do I need to amend my amendment?
No. You're going on presupposition.
So, first we'll vote on the amendment, to amend the motion on the six-month date. Okay? So, all those in favor of amending the motion to have the suspension be, uh, through June 11th, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, nay.
And mayor, I'd like to let you know I'm going to abstain. I'm going to abstain.
Okay. So, all right, any other amendments?
Yes, with the stip, with, uh, amend, amending it with the stipulation that DeBella's keeps the city of Clarkston, uh, Richard Gittens informed on the new processes they're, uh, implementing that, uh, till this won't happen again.
Okay. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, so the motion is now amended to also state that, Richard Gittens be advised of any, um, changes.
If, if improvements to their process.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'd love my hearing ended.
Okay, I've moved and seconded that the motion be amended, that,
that Richard Gittens be advised of the changes in the quality assurance program.
We're gonna, it'll be, it's only.
The building is, the building is, yes, thank you. Okay.
All right, so we had it, we had a second. So, we'll vote on that amendment. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, nay. Okay, now we'll vote on the first motion, which is that, um, on the, we're gonna vote on the main motion.
So, the main motion has amended by?
Has amended.
For six months with, uh, updates to the building inspector of the quality assurance process.
Yay, all right, what he said. Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, nay. And the ayes have it. Thank you, counsel. All right, we're ready to move on. Are we ready for communication from the public? Any communication from the public? Those that live in the city limits will go first. Anybody that lives in the city limits, please get your name and address.
You said question for clarification. So, I live in Lewiston, but I own a home that's close to Foster Park. I consider to be a homeowner.
Yeah.
You can go first.
Okay.
Uh, my name is Jennifer Graham, and I live in Lewiston. I own a home that is 70 feet away from Foster Park where my daughter, her husband, and two of my granddaughters live. My daughter was one that heard screams from, uh, Narcan during an OD at night and called 911. Due to the daily screaming of obscenities, fighting, loud music, snapping up the infamous ol' whip, excessive car horns and alarms, she can no longer leave her windows open for fresh air for her sanity and the safety of my grandchildren. According to a Clue News article written by Chris Mitchell on March 29th, city attorney Suzanne Hanson states the decision of Foster Park, quote, "The parks, we don't have many of them, but the parks that we do have, of all of them, Foster Park was the one that was situated in the area that was going to be least impacted by nighttime residents," end quote. According to the park's police records, uh, public records, since January 1st, 2022 through April 15th, 24, there have been at least 280 police calls to the park. These calls do not include the three and a half months when Foster Park was closed. These 280 police calls include four overdoses, one with one resulting in a death in the bathroom, and the mention of fentanyl in two of them, urinating in public, threatening to kill, assault, weapon offenses, warrant arrest, alcohol and drugs, noise complaints, and animal problems, to name a few. When checking some of the named offenders, there were found to be at least two known child sex offenders among the vagrants and homeless occupying Foster Park. These police calls are by no means all of the complaints, as there are many that do not get called in. The community just puts up with it because they know their calls will result in no permanent solutions with the repeat offenders. Here are some of the local frustrations about park usage. I've received consent to use some of their names. My grandparents purchased this home in the 1940s. There have been five generations that have lived in this home, with all of them making family memories at Foster Park. It's very sad this last generation will have memories of an unsupervised homeless camp and all the crime associated with it right out their front door. Beverly and Ben Murray live right across from the park. They used to take their kids daily, but can no longer do that. They are subjected, subjected to verbal confrontations, not only by the vagrants and homeless as they move daily from the alley back to the park, but by their helper as well. We are about two blocks away and we would frequently visit Foster Park. As the children got older, I felt comfortable allowing them to walk down by themselves. Unfortunately, that is no longer the case. I have many more stories of this type. Shame on all of you for designating Foster Park as a homeless pit camp where crime continues to run rampant. Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment?
My name is Chris Alexander, and I live here in Clarkston, within the city limits. And I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to speak. I came to Clarkston 21 years ago. I didn't have a place to live. I was traumatized by almost being murdered by my husband. I did not turn to drugs, and I did not blame everybody else for my problems. I had to get a job, I did. I had to have a place to live. I had to couch serve for two months. I got a place to live within two months. I got a job. It is not, it was not the city's job to find me a place to live or take care of me. We are not talking about the mentally and physically disabled and mentally ill. We are talking about probably 80% of the people in that park that are able-bodied and they can work if they want to. They don't want to. They want to buy drugs instead with every penny they get their hands on. No one at any time has forced them to abuse drugs. They are choosing to break the law. They are testing the citizens and the council, and they just don't care. They've gotten to the point that they just don't care. There, there's rooms you can rent for $500 a month, so you can manage on a minimum wage job. But you've got to work and you've got to want help. And the help is there. There is UGM, there's, if we don't have it here, they've got it in Spokane, they've got it in Wenatchee. There's, there's, uh, rehab centers. I've researched them. They're, they're out there. At any point in time, they can call and say, do you have a bed today? Do you have one tomorrow? As far as the physically and mentally disabled, yeah, we do need to help take care of those, but they are very few in that park that are in that category. Most of them can work. I see them bicycling all over town. I see them walk, they can walk just fine. Their minds are just fine. It is not your responsibility or my responsibility to take care of them. It was not anyone's responsibility to take care of me when I came here, and it's not our job to take care of them. First, they have to take care of themselves. And those people need to be productive, and as long as somebody's giving them handouts, tents, dog food and everything, why should they? Why should they? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Please state your name and address.
Okay, I'm Dorian Kramer, and I've lived for about 20 years, owning my own property on Fourth Street. And I, um, want to have my say. Uh, first of all, I have a question too. Will Clarkson Home must be able to use the UGM building at Lewiston when it is finished? And we built, or even rented building for those who want to better themselves with frequent urine tests, of course, to make sure that, you know, they are staying without drugs. The, the squatters are allowed to stay at the park. And the more they do, the more entitlement they feel that it is their park and not the taxpayers'. With me owning property for 20 years, and I've owned property with my husband before that for years. I've always lived in Clarkston, grew up here. Uh, I feel sorry for those who own property around the park. Some witnessing things that young children do not hear or see. There's ur, there's a court of urinating in front of the windows, fights, drugs, language, et cetera. It's hurting our city. It's depreciating the property value. I was there last Saturday. I didn't see a homeless picking up anything except for the exception where I saw, I saw many dogs running loose. But there is a sign, maybe more than one, but the one I saw was that no dogs allowed in this park, and there's many dogs in there. One dog was doing his thing in the grass. And I said, look at that. You need to pick that up. Well, she personally, the person did pick it up. Well, I give him credit for that. At least he picked it up. But what do you have if I said nothing? You know, um, people have complained that they can't let their kids go in there to even play. Can't go barefoot because there might be needles, who knows what? And I just, you know, anyway, I witnessed last Saturday when I was in the park. I witnessed them smoking weed in the open. They were grass, they were bowed. There was a snow shovel that I saw that was planted clear up in the tree. I mentioned it several times, saying, well, look at that shovel up there, up there. Well, before you know it, someone did take it down. Maybe they're embarrassed. I heard they use their, um, EBT cards to, uh, barter for stuff, perhaps along with selling merchandise and property. Would you appreciate? Would you appreciate living in a home you're buying with younger children across from the park? Would you like your mother, wife, or daughter to be grouped like the lady at the Blue Bridge was recently? Please don't turn a deaf ear to the people of the city whom you serve.
Thirty seconds.
And I thank all the police officers that have been involved in all of these things. Thank you for your service, and...
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
All the city residents, sir? All the city residents, sir?
Looks like it.
And Melissa, and I live in McAllen. You guys, most of you know me, I sat with you up there, I don't envy you right now. Because I know that right now I would be stuck in several positions.
We can't hear you.
I said I definitely don't envy them, because it would be a tough decision to try to make. I was very disappointed with the case today at Grant's Pass. It does not looking good. It's basically leaving it up to possibly the city, the states, but making you fall within guidelines that no resident is ever going to be happy with, no homeowner is ever going to be happy with, no homeless is ever going to be happy with. I have no answers, no solutions at this time. I do have a lot of questions. I've heard a lot of falsehoods that I have tried to call out, one of which was that one of the volunteer's daughter was raped. That hit me extremely hard as a sexual assault survivor. I was ready to go out there and go for blood. I was hopped, and I admit it, I got crazy. Come to find out, it was not her daughter, but there was some kind of incident. I don't know what it is yet, and we'll try to follow up on a report on that later. I do notice that there's a lot of dogs in the park, as everybody else does. When I lived in the city, I had to pay twenty-five dollars a dog for licenses. And any above four, I had to buy a kennel license. I obeyed all of that. I think that since they do have an income, they're not destitute, they're not without money, they can pay that. And I think if they're going to have their dogs in the city, they should pay that. I don't live in the city anymore, but as a resident, I had to. I also would like to ask if, when the new jail is built, if there's an option for the old jail to become a shelter. You don't have to answer that now. I also would like to know exactly what the expenditures of the city are with choir EMS garbage. You don't have to answer that now, these are just questions I'm throwing out. I would also like to know if camper's stuff was put in storage when it was moved from Walmart, because part of the complaint stated that their stuff was thrown in the garbage. Some people said it was not. So I do kind of want confirmation there, because that already checks off one box on the complaint, if it was put in storage. Some people say rent from a building. You know, I fought hard, sitting in those seats, for EMS to stay in this city. It was a hard fight, because we are not a rich city, and our taxpayers have to pay for it. If people want that building rented, they're going to have to pay on a levy to do it, because the city cannot do it. I was on finance committee, I know it can't. So just keep that in mind, if you want it, be ready to pay for it. Also, in that complaint, it was saying that the park was not ADA compliant. I fought for ADA compliance in the park at Beachview. I won, we got wheelchair accessible swings, and they were tore up within six months.
Thirty seconds.
I just want to say also that these people that are helping, they need to spend their time and get a social work degree, go and study and figure out how to actually help these people further with experience and not just on a whim, because there is helping and there is enabling. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment time?
I'm not sure, I'll give it a whirl.
Please state your name and address.
I'm from Lewiston, and my address? So I have seen a lot on both sides, and quite frankly, I went along to be where city council is. I think everyone is great personally. I do not feel like this is going to get anywhere anytime soon, and honestly, I hurt personally when you were up there. So the only reason that I even came up here, because normally I keep my mouth shut. I've only spoken other time. I said this about three months ago. I'm going to say again, if you're not part of the solution, you're part of the problem. Now, my daughter was accused of being raped outside of a park. That didn't happen, that was a lie. I've shut that damn door clean, because it was a lie, she's thirteen years old, wasn't my kid. So volunteers or anybody that helps are targets. I'm in a bit, I have a big charge on my back all the time. I do thank law enforcement, because a lot of those officers help me every single day. And if it wasn't for you guys doing your job, I would not feel safe in a really uncomfortable situation by houses that surround it, people walking through it. And to be honest with you, I am more scared of houses that surround me, people walking through it that don't know what's going on than I am anybody in that park. And I can honestly say that. And that's terrifying to me, because I know that a lot of those people that stay in the park, that come and go out of there that are homeless. It's scary. So anyway, I thank you for your time, and next time somebody accuses me or my child of something, they better know what they're talking about. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you Samantha. Okay, if there are no other persons that want to speak, we'll now close the public comment time and go on to the next item on the agenda. Nothing from the mayor, from staffer employees. As always, committee reports are part of your agenda packets. And we'll go to, by now Batman, the audit on the current bills.
The total expenditures for the April twenty-second, twenty twenty-four period of two hundred sixty-six thousand, two hundred eighty-five dollars and sixteen cents, and the twenty twenty-four March end of month of four hundred thirteen dollars and ninety cents.
I undertake a motion to pay the bills.
So moved.
Been moved in second that the bills be paid. Any questions, council? Now, let's vote, all those in favor of paying bills, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If those nay, the ayes have it. Let's go to unfinished business, there is none. And then we'll have the consent agenda. And I undertake a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Been moved in second that the consent agenda be approved. And for the high school students, what that means is we can put a variety of things together in one motion and then vote on all of those at the same time. It's items that have been vetted by the council committees and things like that, so it saves time in our agenda, so that's why we have the consent agenda. But at any time, if a council member wants to take an item off the consent agenda, they can do so. So that's what consent agendas are all about. Right. Let's vote on the consent agenda. It's been moved in second that the consent agenda be approved. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, nay. And the ayes have it. Thank you, council. We have no new business, ready for council comments?
Yeah, I just want to say that as far as the grant pass against Supreme Court, I don't think it's been finalized either way yet.
It's not.
It might be a while.
It's not, but I listened to a lot of it, and it's not sounding good.
And then, and then I know there is a committee formed that's looking for a place in Sultan County for the homeless, a designated area. And so there is a committee working on that. And as far as the old jailhouse being a place, it would be too much of a liability on the city to have it right there.
Why is that? You have officers there. It's a liability that we'd have to do a whole bunch of remodeling, and we don't have the money to do that. It's an old, old building, and we wouldn't do that. Better than a tent in there. I'm not going to argue with you about it or talk about it, so...
And then, as far as the property from the homeless, the way I understand it, it's being stored for sixty days, and I think most places only require thirty. But is that, is that correct?
Ninety.
Ninety?
We require sixty, but we're keeping it for at least ninety.
I got you.
Potentially for longer.
Okay.
Everything's been labeled and photographed, and so all of the homeless belongings that were left behind were well looked at and allocated to certain people. And so if you, anybody needs to retrieve their belongings, they can come to the police station and ask for them. Okay, other council comments?
Yeah, I mean, it always sucks that people who have questions and talk leave before this moment, so half of the things are useless. But really, I mean, for the people who talk, I mean, we don't necessarily disagree with you about the issues with the park. We're, we understand. But via the Ninth Circuit Court, the lady said it's not our responsibility, but via the Martin v. Boise decision from the Ninth Circuit Court, it is our responsibility. And there's, we're really, we're held to it, and Clarkston is, you know, one municipality that we are meeting our obligation by the law to not violate someone's civil rights and to do just what we're required to do by the law. So, you know, we understand, we understand completely. We can see, we can see what's going on, we can see all sides. But it is our responsibility and obligation to do what we're doing. So until that changes, we have, we have a responsibility, but we do have a group that is working to get something done, to actually progress into what is going to have to be the future of this issue. We, you know, we have a nonprofit we're setting up, and we're going to, we're going to attack it and try to fix it, but that's not a, that's not a fast process. That's not happening next week or next month. But it will happen. UGM is available, once it is built and established, to everybody, but it is a high-barrier shelter, so the people have to meet a lot of requirements in order to take shelter at UGM. I mean, and the way I understand it is the jail isn't really up to snuff to be in a jail right now. If it wasn't already an established jail, it couldn't even be used as that.
Right, I didn't mean like burn it, I just meant like warm it.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't, I don't think that could, that could ever, I don't think that could ever happen, and I'm not even really sure that's the responsibility of the city right now. And I think that was all, all that I really had to address. The majority of that was to people who aren't here, but everybody can hear it and take it for what it's worth. And then as far as that developed decision goes, I mean, if, if we have a problem, it was a two-week process to get them in here. I mean, it was, that letter's from March twenty-fifth. I would, I would like to give them a chance to prove what they're doing, and if they, if they, if they just can't do it, we can be right back here again and take care of that and make sure that we protect our citizens. And that's kind of how I was feeling about it.
Yeah, and I don't think Clarkston's the only place they do business. They do business in Spokane.
Oh, everywhere.
I don't think it's going to hurt them that bad.
Yeah.
I'll add this, you know, I had my review done last year, and it took me almost eight months to get somebody in. I know how backed up.
Contractors are in need.
Their service is.
Yeah. Yeah, anyway, thanks for letting me, yeah.
Any other comments, council?
Yes, I just want to say, rest in peace to Tommy Samuels. You're a hell of a wrestler, you would've missed. Thank you.
Okay, questions from the press? Good. Alrighty, we are going into executive session, so...
We still got quite a bit out there, so let's check it out. Now that we can talk again, my gums are wanting to flap. Yes, I see it too. Back there about twenty-two minutes later. Yeah, I see that, that's weird, she's wanting to come out. I figured I'd better record just in case.
There's not one person picking up that themselves, there was a girl right there. They're picking up after them. They are not children.
No, I, I... Easy to announce, you know?
The worst, the worst circuit court in the whole entire country.
Renate the changes administration.
Well, what happened, this all started with Boise. So the marketing, the marketing forces Boise, Boise, they just came their way out of it. They're like, "We don't want to fight, we don't want to give, we don't want to have this." So they just paid a huge fine, and then pretty much the... Yeah, the problem, exactly. In Bagby's in Arizona, they don't talk very well. It's hard.
But we want them to have compassion too, for themselves and for the community. We want them to help themselves.
Those are different, yeah, but at least that was clear enough.
And I pointed out, hey, there's dogs running all the way around in there, and right there is a sign that says no dogs allowed. They are smoking weed only right there in the park, they are...
One of the other, one of the other meetings that they had, they actually, they brought that up and said the only reason why, that's for petty, minor little things like that. They're choosing not to take it, and they're just going to take it. Yeah, well, that's where they were discerning, that's where they were trying to distinguish the word.
I have no issue with you, just hearing maybe you guys, because I know you guys are just filming, doing what you guys like to do. I just can't go anywhere without getting attacked on both sides, quite frankly, I'm sick of it, so...
I agree, you there too? No, I'm, I'm serious, I get attacked on both sides too.
Sammy, if you heard that conversation with the officer, you know that I'm not having...
Like I said, my family, my kids have been threatened, my home's been threatened, all because somebody didn't know you. I, I dealt with the police, I don't think her view were the thing at that time, but I had a neighbor who was going crazy, and she was trying to kill cats around my property. And I like to talk to the police chief, I can't remember, that was about, uh, something, uh, coming by Fourth Street.
So I've been cheap for twenty-one minutes, but I did.
Okay, it's, it's, yeah, so it must have been, you know, you know, we came out there twenty-some odd years, you know? But other than that, and you're really good, I says, "Hey, you know, we got our cats, we get them straight in the yard and all this." And yet this person, and then she ended up telling, there's across the alleyway behind me, somebody had a little pet, and they just lived about starting school. Now, the parents were really kind of very poor, and they had, live in this house that their parents had made up. And anyway, they said, "Hey, she was saying she was jumping around." So the woman said, "Hey, go to school with your kid." Long told the cat, cat came back staggering, was jarred, you know, just whatever. And so anyway, he ran around the neighborhood, and Betty had a cage in her backyard, and put a little fish in there, a little fish.
Quite frankly, I...
Yeah, I just, and he killed that kid.
I don't have to, just what I do where I'm at, one with you. Honestly, what everybody, or Mary, tries to expect, I mean...
Honestly, what everybody in America tries to expect, Sammy. You don't keep them very long, I mean. Yeah, you don't end up in jail cells, you know. And the crazy part is only one of them, somebody was, everybody else was somebody. That I don't know. I shouldn't have to. Yeah, that's why I said exactly what I said up there. Yes. Again, there's a choice that like I said, I am there all the time, even when I don't want to be. Unlike, you know, for example, houses, right, that call nine-one-one, because they get nine-one-one, right? There's an officer, I didn't. Okay, they're calling crazy, calling crazy. There's a way for it, for it, you know, switch. Okay, I know. But there is a leash law, you can call the cops because there is a leash law. That is, there's nothing wrong with that. The residents have a license because they're shitting in their yard. If the dog is shitting in some dirt, I had a dog, my dog shitting in some dirt, I had to pull him. I had them pulled on because my dog wouldn't get some of the water. When I was a dog, young dog. The homeowner, yes, the homeowner pulled him out because our dog got his dog.
I think that would be like drinking on the river.
Or littering or.
It'd be real hard.
I get trying to stop.
I have a question on that. How many beds are out here? How many other counties or cities are?
I'm doing some sea pine. I'm sure the homeless, amazing, sweet pine. And I could keep going for hours, community, community action hours, fantastic, child hours, fantastic.
So that's the potential.
I have been told that she's. And with no address and with no.
I noticed this started last year, when, once, once they figured out there was no accountability for their actions.
It's been going on for longer, yeah, it's been going on longer.
Right.
Yeah, that's why you should just keep breaking laws and don't appear in them. No accountability.
That's, that's, that's one thing that will change. Yeah, I think by the end of the year, probably early next year, hopefully they'll have the staff.
Oh, I saw everything else.
If they hate a meth, that's their misdemeanor. Yeah, it, it is a misdemeanor, so it was always a felony for, forever. And it went to the, it was actually to the point where it was legal, it wasn't legalized. Couldn't charge anybody with, because of the state Supreme Court case in Washington. Now it's back to a misdemeanor and that's part of the problem is if it was a felony, you would go to jail. They have to take, they have to take the felony risks, they don't have to take the misdemeanor. Misdemeanor possession of drugs is unlikely to put you in jail right now just because of the space issues. Unless the occasional judge decides, I mean, this person for whatever reason. But they have to almost triage their jail, decide, you know, what goes in.
This person.
So what, so what I'm hearing is that at least through the summer, foster parks will be a homeless.
Well, you don't know that, the, you know, the Supreme Court made today, that's, that's in a court, that's in a court.
I've been following it.
Probably, probably by the end of June, so.
For the sound.
Yeah, and we all understand Martin Boise and Grant's pass, I know you do, we've talked just, everybody understands.
I understand it well.
That's, 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 that's the issue. To those people who see private property as that case. So that's, that's one issue and then we started a task force and we don't talk about it a whole lot. We're making some progress toward a more permanent solution. If, if you look up the Walla Walla Housing Alliance online, or look that up, and that's been kind of a model in eastern Washington. Started in Walla Walla and I think thirty cities have sort of taken that model. What it is, is tiny, they're not homes, they call them tiny homes, but they're quants and huts, they don't even have power. And kind of stonehards and they moved them out of town and it seems to work well. They have a space, that's considered a shelter, so if you have shelter space.
That's all you need.
That's all you need, exactly. So Walla Walla has done it, we're the last place in Washington that hasn't experienced this. Everywhere, every chief and sheriff I talked to has already been down this road in Washington. We're like the last probably community dealing with it. And, and so, but we have to, we're trying to come up with a more permanent solution and that's one of the things that our, our committee is working on. I think we've made a lot of progress, but I don't, I don't know if, you know, that's, anything there will happen soon, but we're really working on it for a more permanent thing. If we had, well, Walla Walla has or Moses Lake or some of those, you know, we could provide a place where a sleep center at night. And if there's a sleep center, we can't, we can't use public property.
So thinking of my daughter that lives in the corner from the floor. Two granddaughters. Thinking about the summer life coming up. Very good about them not being in the park this summer.
Yep.
Why can't they be transferred to another park for a couple of months and let the people around the park?
That would be a question for the council.
And yet I wouldn't want to curse another neighborhood, but yet that would open their eyes up, knowing and seeing what's on.
Well, they, they, the people that are in the parks now was there last summer, in the summer before autumn. And they, they tend to like that park because they have meals next door and that's why they started to go to Foster Park. And our, one of our officers, he sold his house in February or March of this year, he was the one in White House right across the street.
And he didn't like living there.
Well, he, he, he had a, he got married and he had a child.
So I, I got there when I read the email.
He wanted a bigger home.
But there's the here shade is home.
I don't know, I, he sold it, I know that, but I don't, I don't know.
That's the ones that are right across the street.
He's the one that was directly across the street in that White House. Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, that's, that's, she's the one that told me that her daughter saw a male anatomy when he was just whizzing right in front of the window. I mean, that's just.
Well, just continue to call as you have problems, I know it can be frustrating when you don't see them go to jail as much as you think you should, but. And that, that problem, you start a solution, it's gonna be. I, I get that, but that's her job.
That is important and something else to do, because, you know, I went to be such a parent, you know, over at S and S. And I didn't have no stupid fight or pain, but my eyes kept wishing, I paid.
We got some over there.
Party's still going.
All sorts of things from directing traffic to, uh, guardian, lots and stuff like that. You know, it's taking a lot of resources.
I, I think we're just stuck with the one part, like we only have one parking lot. It's on the outskirts being, they only have four parts, but which is why per park, you know, that's why it's the least impact for foster parks. The homeless shelter, it's not really like a homeless shelter, all-day shelter too, it's more. I don't know if you guys wish to, specifically, they'll have to leave during the day, yep, they'll have to, you know.
So Walla, Walla started out that way, so they, it was just a sleep center, you could only be there at night. But the community actually supported, so they could be there all day, so there, there's a place, it's community owned at that, that was kind of a community term. And to be.
I, I, on their website.
Now they, they, the, actually, it's pretty affordable, to get into a Walla Walla, it was Sydney traded contract, there was a property. It's kind of an apartment area where there's no commercial, there's some business, no commercial at all, no residential. So the Sydney got that, grabbed on the fence, and they bought these kind of stonehards, the material, because it was pretty cold material for all twelve months. They put it together, volunteered, people volunteered, well, they put it together, they had thirty, thirty one. Still have their, they don't have power, but they're very well insulated and they have like, they got some, a couple buildings from some. They have, they have power, so they can go and do that all year. And they're still good, I mean, they have people that have, um, trespassing. But for the most part, it works really well, we have the manager and we have the, uh, one of the, the founding board.
But that family is too.
And, and that's a different thing, yeah, they started, didn't start out with that, now they have transitional housing. So if a family becomes, you know, loses their home, they can live in this transitional housing for six months. It's a different part of this project and they only give them six months to give them incentive to.
The hustle.
To do something, you got six months to get a job and, or, and go, so that's, but that, that's a different part of this.
Oh, that's a question, a question. I'm just curious about this one, so I've heard that some of the parks are paid for by grant money and we have to follow the certain rules of grants in order to get the money to maintain and take care of the parks. So do you know anything about that?
Not really, that would be, that's the question, I know, you know, some, sometimes they take.
And actually, I did talk to this woman this morning, she told me, I did send an email, she told me this morning and she said that you want to grant that foster park he's ever had, he's willing to pay.
Okay, so this is not getting made. I was wondering, we didn't follow what the grant rules or the rules of grants for maintenance and for sale of properties, that's.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's good.
Yeah, yeah. But, but yeah, continue to call if you have problems and. You know, there, there, there are things going on to try and resolve this.
I wish we'd escaped, we didn't know they were gonna ask for a grant.
Oh, I know, we just thought they were just gonna worry, so we came out and discussed.
I think, I think escape had, wrote all your questions down, he was, he answered them.
Did he answer that, are the Clarkson people homeless, can they ever use the?
The UGM, so they can use, they can use it.
Well, it turned out to be a busy night. How cool is that? To the lady in the park, on one of my last videos, not sure when it's gonna drop, but in a wheelchair, thank you for voicing your opinion. Good for you.